Thank you and welcome to our committee of the whole meeting, five P M, January sixteenth on Monday. So I'll have it moved by Martin Lang, seconded by Trevor Bujie. Be resolved that the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Committee of Whole Meeting now be opened at five P M. All those in favor? Any of opposed? Seeing none? Carried? All right. Are there any amendments, the agenda that are required?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there are no amendments.
Thank you. So moved by Trevor Bujie, seconded by Stephanie Jaworski. Be it resolved that the council, the township of South Glengarry, approve the agenda as circulated. All those in favor? Any of opposed? Seeing none? Carried. Okay, well, then we'll get right into it. Presentations and delegations for a Backrounder Ontario Blue Box Program Transition to Producer Responsibility. Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, and thank you to council for coming to this meeting two hours early from the normal council meeting. We certainly appreciate it from administration. And we're here today to talk to you about the Blue Box Program Transition to Producer Responsibility. And before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge the Continuous Improvement Fund. You'll see at the bottom of our slides that our slide deck was adapted from their presentation dated exactly a month ago. So the Continuous Improvement Fund is a partnership between the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Stewardship Ontario, the City of Toronto, and Ripra. I have forgotten what R P R A stands for, but they do a lot of work in this field. So that's a little embarrassing anyhow. The Continuous Improvement Fund's mandate is to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the municipal Blue Box Program here in Ontario. So they support municipalities across Ontario with this type of thing, since the province has recognized that there are a lot of small municipalities like us who don't have full-time staff dedicated specifically to solid waste management or even more specifically the Blue Bin Program. So we rely heavily on C I F in learning what's coming up. And they put on some pretty neat webinars once a month right now to assist us in understanding the changes in legislation, because it is comprehensive and again, without full-time staff dedicated to Blue Box, really, really tough to handle. So again, just an acknowledgement to C I F for their work over the years. So getting into our presentation on the screen is the outline for tonight. I know it looks a little dry, and it may be, but if you think about this being a setup for a story, so how we got here, where we are, where we're going, and what the impact is to our community, that that's what we're here to talk to you folks to about tonight. So what is producer responsibility? What is all the hoopla? And they again have a really excellent definition. So it is a regulatory approach to waste management, where producers are responsible for waste generated from their products and packaging. So right now in Ontario, we are shifting to an extended producer responsibility, meaning that the producers are fully responsibility for the operations and finance, operationally and financing for the Blue Bin Program, meaning the curbside collection that we receive for papers, plastics, and metals. So right now, we have shared industry funding. And the best way to describe that is we have producers, they produce something. Let's say they make water, and they package their water, and they package their packaging, and then they send it out into the world, and people buy their product, rip apart their packaging, and suddenly we have something that we need to deal with. So we drink our water, and we're left with the bottle. And many, many years ago, going back to the nineteen eighties, we were pilot projects, and it came up, you know, recycling is the way to go. And I am told that back at that time, there were companies who said that they would be responsible for this recycling program, and they got their, they finagled their way out of it. Let's just say that. So in nineteen ninety-four, the government came out with the Environmental Protection Act, which said that municipalities, you are fully responsible for Blue Box Programs, because we are recognizing that in our landfills, there's a lot of junk. So we're throwing in plastic, and it could, we should be doing something else with it. And so in nineteen ninety-four, the municipal Blue Bin Program became a thing, which is, you can see where the flaw in that is. The producers are producing all of this recyclable material, and suddenly it's one hundred percent on us, the municipality, to deal with it. And municipality said, hey, this is not fair. This is costing us a lot of money. So in two thousand and two, the Waste Diversion Act came out, and that is the shared industry funding that we're in now. So the producers make their product, consumers buy it, they chuck it in their recycling bin and say, feel good. I have diverted my waste. The municipality runs around, collects stuff, sends it to a processing unit somewhere, and the producers kick back fifty percent of the operations. So, and this is not fifty percent of the total collections cost. It seems to me to be about fifty percent of the processing cost. So the municipality still bears the brunt of that. And on the flip side of this, now that the producers are sending us a fifty percent or twenty-five percent of that money, they want to save money, so they're making cheaper packaging, right? Remember in the eighties and the nineties, water bottles were thick? And now there's this thin crappy plastic, excuse my language, I'm very sorry, Mr. Mayor, right? So that's a problem. They throw it into the blue, we throw it into the Blue Bin, and we think, hey, we've done a great job. We've diverted, we're using less packaging. But this plastic is incredibly hard to recycle. Like, it is, it is not easy, and it costs more money, and it's challenging. So where we are now is removing people, we've said, listen, this is not okay. And we're recognizing that even though we're feeling good about diverting and recycling, it's not getting to that circular economy that we really, really want. So we're moving towards now, the producers will make it, people buy it, they put it in their Blue Bin, and the producers will take it away and deal with it. So they will have to work into their, their funding model, how to basically deal with their own waste, which is fantastic. However, it's not the end, like, this is not a circular economy in any way, shape, or form, but it is a step in the right direction. And if I could make a plug for Plastics Packed Canada, they have an excellent website, and they're a conglomerate of corporations and plastic aficionados here in Canada who are working towards having a true circular economy for plastics. It's like a water bottle, you will recycle it, and it gets maybe one or two more uses. They want it so once the plastic is recycled, it continues in our economy. So, I mean, we are recycling, we are diverting, but like this water bottle, which is one hundred percent recycled, like, this is probably a second use. Its third use will be fibers for a shirt or fill in a pillow or something. So I, I know it's a bit of a rambly story to how we got here, but it's really important, I think, for everyone to understand why we're moving this direction as a province, and that there's still work to be done. So once we as a municipality give up, or legislatively give up our Blue Box Responsibility, there's still stuff that we can do to encourage the producers to do more and encourage ourselves to do more. So this is certainly not the end of the story, but it's an exciting wayside along the story. And I can kind of flip through my next few slides, because the next bit is legislative framework, and we've just talked about how that all came about. So the Environmental Protection Act, Waste Diversion, the Waste Diversion Act, and right now we have the Waste Free Ontario Act, which is bringing us to full producer responsibility. So you can see at the bottom, that operational model goes from one hundred percent municipalities, one hundred percent municipalities, to one hundred percent producer. And that is, that is fantastic. And for anyone watching at home who doesn't want to deal with acronyms, the following slide writes out all the acts and how they fit together. So right now, we're operating under the Waste Diversion Transition Act, and in a few years, that act will be set aside and will be under the, there's so many words in these, the Resource Recovery and Circular Economy Act. And again, I mean, we're working towards a circular economy, but this is not a circular, like, a circular economy is more than what this will be. And that's my kind of high horse about the state of, the state of affairs of this. So specifically for Blue Box Transition, there are a few key terms and concepts that council should be made aware of, so this all makes sense. We have our producers, who are the people who make things. So they are, are, yeah, they're the people that make things. And there are any company out there, and obviously we're not going to have Coke or Molson managing Blue Bin Programs, because that's, that would be kind of probably a disaster. So they have something called a Producer Responsibility Organization, or a PRO. So the PROs represents producers, and each producer got to choose which PRO they wanted to join. So there were a number of these PROs who were, over the past two years, kind of jockeying for position and trying to get producers on board with them. And at the end of the day, Circular Materials Ontario came out as the prevalent PRO here in Ontario. So we call them C M O, and moving forward, for the most part, it will be C M O who will be managing our Blue Bin Program here in Ontario, meaning that they will be responsible for the curbside collection, depot collection. They will determine where the MRFs will be, so the material recycling facilities, and they will be responsible for all of the operations of the Blue Bin Program. So Circular Materials Ontario, C M O is the name to remember. We also have eligible communities and eligible sources. So eligible communities are, again, in the regulation, and they are any, any local municipality that is not located far north. Sufficient to say, we are an eligible community, and we will be serviced by Circular Materials Ontario in the near future. We have eligible sources, which are also defined through the regulation, and they define the types of properties, I guess, that would receive Blue Bin service from Circular Materials Ontario within an eligible community. So there will be eligible sources within South Glengarry, and we'll talk a little bit more about what those might be, moving a little later in the program. And of course, we come to timelines. So here in South Glengarry, you know, we're transitioning, that's great, but, but when? So the regulation that we talk about a lot came out in June of last year, June of two years ago, my goodness, twenty twenty-three. So June twenty twenty-one, and we're now at the beginning of twenty twenty-three. And as of January one, twenty twenty-six, that is when full producer responsibility hits, and Circular Materials Ontario will be responsible for all curbside collection in Ontario. Obviously, there are huge logistical challenges with implementing a program like this. So municipalities are transitioning in the three years leading up to that. So it's, we come on board in phases to not overwhelm the system. I believe, I believe, ooh, I'm sorry, the first municipalities will come on board mid this year, but we in South Glengarry, and this happened before my time, got together with the other townships and regions in our area and selected January one, twenty twenty-five as our transition date. So as of January one, twenty twenty-five, South Glengarry will no longer be responsible for curbside Blue Bin Collection. So this does not consider garbage, like, garbage is still our responsibility, but in terms of Blue Bin, like, recycling, January one, twenty twenty-five is a date to remember. And as I said, all the municipalities around us are transitioning at the same time, so it'll be a nice regional approach. And the full transition dates are in my staff report later tonight. So if you're curious about when a municipality may be transitioning, there's a, I think, five or six pages of those dates. Next up in our slides are decisions for council. So we're going to talk about, a little bit about the decisions that you'll, you'll need to make, and then we'll get into the impacts. So the decisions are, do we consider, consider providing services? And there are two different options. We can, excuse me, enter into a non-competitive process to continue to provide services during the transition only. So January one, twenty twenty-five through January one, twenty twenty-six. And then as of January one, twenty twenty-six, under this, we would transition completely to C M O. And the reason that this is an option, because it seems kind of odd, we're transitioning, why would we continue? It's because C M O recognizes that it's a huge burden on them, and everyone's behind the eight ball. So they're saying, hey, if there's a municipality out there who is able to help us out and provide services through transition, we would appreciate that. And then they will pay a bit of money back to you based on a funding algorithm. In, yeah, and the other one is a competitive process, which would cover during and beyond transition. And this one, I'm just going to say, in staff's opinions, is a straight out no. Like, we don't have garbage trucks, we don't have our own people, we don't have a MRF. Like, this is not a good option for South Glengarry to provide, to bid competitively on it. Spoiler alert, we're also not recommending jumping in, providing services through the non-competitive process, but that one is like a little less of a hard no, because council may have reasons to provide during twenty twenty-five. So the question, the big question is, do we opt in, or do we opt out during the transition period? So the transition period, again, I'll say this so many times, January one, twenty twenty-five through January one, twenty twenty-six. And providing services would be continuing the Blue Box, Blue Box Program as it is, and we would enter into a master service agreement with Circular Materials Ontario. We would continue to contract out the services. We would continue to find a place to take our recycling on our own. And I can say right, right now, we bring our recycling to the cornwall material, MRF, and I suspect that they will not have services through our transition, because I believe cornwall is opting out, so that they've opted out of, or I believe they will be opting out of providing services. So if we were to provide services in that one year, then we would likely be hit with a con, I'll get to this in a little bit. However, suffice to say that if we continued, we need somebody to do it, do it for us, and somewhere to take it, because these are not things we have on our own. And some of the questions that council should be considering in determining whether they're opting in or opting out are, can performance requirements be met? In entering into the master service agreement, there are a range of conditions that we would need to meet. So if we had, if the recycling that we brought has more than a five percent contamination, we may be hit with additional fees. We will most certainly be hit with having to come up with a quality checklist. And can we, as a municipality, give the administrative overhead required to manage the contract through the master service agreement? Which is a lot of way to say that, like, our staff, so likely myself, will have a whole raft of paperwork to, to do, to meet the terms of the master service agreement, which would be at above and beyond what we're currently doing now. So it'd be to make sure that with Circular Materials Ontario, we're meeting all their requirements, which are quite beefy. And again, in the staff reports, there was a whole legal opinion written, a legal opinion that was appended, that kind of talked about this, this sort of thing from an expert's perspective. The next bullet is a big one, is discretion over program deals important? So as of January one, twenty twenty-six, this will be a fact, and it's whether or not South Glengarry would like it to be a fact as early as January one, twenty twenty-five. So with a regional approach to wait to the Blue Box Program, it is unlikely that the collection days will remain the same for our residents. Circular Materials Ontario will not look at South Glengarry as South Glengarry. They will likely look at either Eastern Ontario or S D and G as a whole. So our collection will be bundled in some way that is not, you know, municipally, that is not the municipal boundaries. So as of January one, twenty twenty-six, for certainty, our, our Blue Bin Collection days will change. And I would say, I don't know, but we'll see when we get there. It's unlikely that we'll be able to line up garbage collection with Blue Bin collection just because we'll be working at different scales. So that is a, that's a consideration. When does South Glengarry want to, I guess, pull that Band-Aid off? Depot location is the next bullet point, and it's not a concern for us. And then weather to service non-eligible sources, and that will be a few slides from now. Contracts, this is excellent. Whenever the last contract was brought up for renewal in twenty twenty-one, staff made it a three-year contract. So our current collection contract expires a month before, so November twenty twenty-four. So we would just need to extend our current contract one month, and then we can move over to C M O, being our, our collections, not our, but taking over for collections in twenty twenty-five. And since we don't have any of our own assets related to curbside collection, the final bullet, bullet on the, I guess, primed list doesn't really apply to us. So we, I just mentioned eligible sources. Is it working? Here we go. So currently, local municipalities collect from really whoever we want to collect for, from, but we only get that fifty percent funding back from residential sources. So we don't receive any, any funding back for our institutional, commercial, or industrial properties, or our I C and I. Through post, through transition, and as part of the regulation, oh, this is eligible sources. Excellent. So through transition, eligible sources will be single-family homes, seasonal dwellings, multi-res buildings, public and private schools, some retirement homes, and some, some public spaces. And this next slide just, just kind of talks about during the transition and what happens at transition. But what if you're not eligible, and who is not eligible? And that will be also a big question, and I think debate for council. So on this slide, we have our non-eligible sources right now. You know, we can collect from whomever, but it's just the money that we don't get back. Post-transition, our non-eligible sources in our community will be industrial or commercial properties, our not-for-profit organizations, our municipal buildings and facilities, so our arenas and the S D and G libraries, daycare, places of worship, campgrounds and trail parks, and commercial farms. So they will be excluded from Blue Bin pickup through C M O. And that may be a source of contention within the community. And I think on this particular topic, one of the big discussions will be, how do we communicate that? And all I can say to council is that C I F will be working towards helping municipalities develop communications. And we do have a regional waste working group, and one of our, our main goals over the next two years will be to come up with a regional approach to communicating this to all of our residents. Non-eligible sources embedded along route. So we talked about this a little bit on November seventeenth or fifteenth, whenever we define levels, the level of service for twenty twenty-three, and what happens when you have commercial embedded with residential. And when we transition, so either through, either just January one, twenty twenty-five, but most definitely January one, twenty twenty-six, businesses attached to residential, whether they be, you know, grand four commercial or right adjacent to townhomes, will no longer be, be serviced. So I think the slide is pretty clear, but that will be a change in some of our hamlets, where our commercial businesses are no longer receiving Blue Bin pickup. And designated materials, so that's what is going to be picked up, maybe. Well, more or less, right now, what we can process in recycling is very much decided by where we bring our recycling. So what our MRF can process is what we can offer, which is why when you look at the city of Cornwall, South Stormont, and ourselves, we all can pick up the same Blue Bin materials. But when you look at something like North Glengarry, who's using their own rare plant, they might have a different set of materials that they can pick up in their Blue Bins moving forward and through C M O. So as of January one, twenty twenty-six, it will be consistent across the province. This is a benefit for people who have seasonal homes or may travel a lot within the province. You don't have to think of like, what do you recycle here? It's, it's just the same. And that is, like I said, a benefit to, to this program. It is interesting, interesting to note that what is being collected, it is already defined through the regulation. So January one, twenty twenty-six, they, they must collect, it's regulated, and they will choose what extra things they'd like to do. And again, we don't know, and we will see. Like, there are a lot of questions as to what will be offered by C M O to us. It's beneficial that we're coming in a year and a half after the first municipality transitions, because we'll get to see where the road bumps are, and we'll get to learn from their mistakes. And hopefully, C M O will be able to, you know, get their, get their, their affairs in order. So how does this relate to South Glengarry? So our local program right now, we have weekly single-string, single-stream collection. We do it contracted out through a third party, so H G C. So H G C provides the trucks and the manpower. And that collection contract, as I mentioned, was negotiated until November twenty twenty-four, keeping in mind that we would transition January one, twenty twenty-five. Our collection costs are, through that contract, are four hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year. And unfortunately, that contract includes a fuel adjustment clause, so we are paying a fuel adjustment on top of the October twenty twenty-one price. And it is trending at about five thousand dollars a month for recycling. So if fuel goes down, hopefully we'll see, it won't be so much. On the curbside collection side, this is offset a bit by the municipal funding allocation model. It's always two years behind, so the last known data point is from twenty twenty, and we received an offset of about twenty thou, or two hundred thousand dollars. So that would be that fifty percent industry funding that we receive. In terms of the actual recycling side itself, as I mentioned, we have an agreement with the cornwall material recycling facility, or MRF, and that contract automatically, automatically renews every January one. So it's just automatically renewed, and we continue to bring our, our stuff to. So it's just automatically renewed, and we continue to bring our, our stuff to their facility. In that agreement, which I believe was signed in 2020, we pay the City of Cornwall $301 per tonne to recycle our materials, and in 2021, that was about $227,000. Luckily, the agreement also has a market sharing clause in it, so depending on how well the markets are doing, we get some of that money back. And in 2021, it was $136,000. So the annual costs, all in, are about, it says 835, but who knows with the fuel adjustment, $800,000 to $835,000, less the offsets, which would be about $400,000, if that's, if that's helpful. And just for fun, this one is just to see how South Glengarry is doing with recycling. You can see our historical recycling tonnage. I don't have the full 2022 numbers yet. I'm expecting them to come in soon, but you can see we're, it looks like we're zigzagging all over the place because we're really zoomed in between 660 and 800, but when you pull that out to a larger thing, we're pretty consistent around the 750 mark. And I am going to hand it over now to Mr. Jane.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Good evening, council. I'd like to talk briefly now about our landfills and our landfill closure and post-closure liabilities. So as everyone here is aware, hopefully, that the township operates two active landfills. Each landfill is operated in compliance with their environmental compliance approval. The end-of-life for the two landfills is listed here. So the North Lancaster landfill, it was last surveyed in 2021, is expected to end its life in the next five years. The Beaverbrook landfill, which was last surveyed in 2020, is expected to end its life in the next 10 years in 2033. Okay, so the cost associated with the closure and, excuse me, okay, the cost associated with the closure and post-closure of the landfills include costs such as clay, topsoil, hydroseed, site preparation, equipment, ditching, draining, and post-closure monitoring, excuse me, for an estimated five years after the service life of the landfills is done. As part of the 2022 year-end and 2022 audit, the value of this liability will have to be reevaluated to match current market estimates. So the 2021 audited financial statements, which was presented to council earlier in October, estimated the landfill and closure and post-closure liability at $2 million, of which approximately 1.5 million has been currently accrued. And as we all know, with current market increases to everything infrastructure-related, this amount is likely to significantly increase once that reassessment has been completed. The other thing we're also fighting against is the upcoming PSAB regulatory changes, where the total value of this liability, along with all other asset retirement obligations, so they're called AROs, will be required to be listed on the balance sheet. So that's the PS3280 regulation that's coming into effect as of 2023. And if the current model accrues the liability, so the carrying amount of the liability increases on an annual basis by a number that is proportional to how much service life is left in each of the landfills. So as of 2021, the carrying amount of that liability was $1.5 million, and the total value of that liability was $2 million. If PS3280 had come into effect in 2021, the carrying amount of that liability would not have been $1.5 million, it would have been the whole $2 million. And so when this PS3280 finally comes into effect, the entire value of the reassessed liability will have to be shown on the face of the balance sheet. And as you can imagine, that's going to significantly reduce the township's accumulated surplus numbers. The township will be required to use a combination of long-term debt, future taxation, and reserves to be able to fund the liability in upcoming years. And just as reference points, neighboring townships and municipalities, some of those liabilities are worth upwards of $30 million.
You have a question from Deputy Mayor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is, would you like to go through the whole presentation and then go back and touch on points, or do you want us to interrupt and ask questions as we come across them?
I suppose at this point, we're at slide 32 or 33 or 36. It might be prudent just to carry on, but maybe we should have had that question before. Sorry for.
That's good. Thank you.
The slide here lists the recycling costs, the net recycling cost for the township over the last three years. So the net recycling cost of average about $365,000 for the past three fiscal years. And as Ms. McDonald stated, our costs are have, are projected to increase quite significantly going forward, largely due to that fuel adjustment. The latest estimates that we have gotten regarding inflation is that prices are not expected to drop in 2023. The rate of inflation is expected to decrease in 2023, however, prices are not expected to drop in 2023. And as such, the net cost projected for 2023 for recycling is $525,000. So as Ms. McDonald mentioned, it's 835, less the offsets. So adopting a strategy to allocate the savings associated with the Blue Box transition to full producer responsibility to be able to fund this liability in upcoming years will, first and foremost, allow the township to reduce the upward pressure on the taxation budget, understanding that there's only three ways to fund the liability. It's either through reserves, through taxation, or through long-term debt. It will also allow us to maintain reserves at healthy and sustainable balances to be able to fund future planned capital expenditures and unplanned emergency work. It would also reduce greatly the amount of borrowing in long-term debt that will be required to fund the liability, and will also allow the township to fund future capital landfill needs, as well as set aside funds to assist in extending the remaining service life of the two landfills. So as I previously mentioned, one of the landfills is expected to end its service life in the next five years. So if there's anything that we can do to be able to extend the service life of that landfill, that is, of course, something that we would look favorably upon as administration, and then some of these funds could be used to extend that life. The current state is that the township currently does not have any formal plan or strategy to be able to fund the landfill closure and post-closure liability in future years without issuing significant amounts of long-term debt and incurring significant taxation increases. So the last slide here provides the recommendation that is presented by administration, and this recommendation is more fully spelled out in your council agenda package. Just want to be clear about one thing. What is not up for debate today is setting levels of service for Blue Box transition. It is simply to decide whether or not we are opting in in 2025. That is the only thing that is up for debate. We are not debating supplementing the program, especially at this point. We don't know what the province's program is going to look like. We are simply debating whether or not we are opting in or opting out in 2025. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. And you heard it pretty loud and clear. We're not discussing the change of service, we're just discussing at what point we will take that transition. Is there any interest we'll go to Counsel Bougie, then Deputy Mayor Lang?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I do have lots of questions, and, I mean, there's lots there to digest. So just, I guess, the last thing we talked about was the landfill site. So you brought up some costs. Is there any costs with the Summers Town landfill right now? Are we? Because I guess the question I'm going to have later is, I guess my concern with the program is, I guess, the amount of exclusions post 2025. So we're talking daycare farms, libraries, municipal buildings. I guess, what's the alternative for them through this program? So two questions.
I do believe that is just a service level question. Is it not? Or is it just, I don't, I want to make sure we answer the question first before we get into, because we do have.
Well, I just wanted clarification for.
Okay, if it's possible, I just, that's a little service level.
Thank you, Counsel Bougie, and through you. I'll answer the first question. And the Summers Town, currently, our obligations are to monitor it in accordance with its ECA, and I believe the annual cost just decreased to $2,000 a year. So unless we see significant groundwater change, changes to the groundwater monitoring, it's very negligible.
And as for your second question through you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Bougie, again, that's something that the province is going to have to provide greater level of clarity on at this point. At this point, we're not entirely sure what the province's program currently looks like. And so that's something that we will have to seek greater clarity on as we move closer to the transition time.
Fair enough. Do you have further questions, or is that satisfied?
I'll stop there for now.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. And I might be something similar. I'm hoping that we get a chance to go around more than once, because I do have more than one or two questions, but I would like to, don't want to take all the time. But I'd like to start with one or two, and then maybe come back while other people have had a chance. So before I answer, you're basically asking us one question tonight, and I'm willing to give you that answer. But before I answer it, is there a date that we need to give this answer to the province or to the, you know, to whoever the powers that be are? That's my, that's, I want to start with that.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Is it a question-answer, question-answer? Is the easy, okay.
I'm sorry, I, before I answer the next one, I want to, I want that, to know that information.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's a fair question. So the Circular Materials Ontario approached us in July, and we asked for a stay to find out more information about the program. They approached us again in late December and said that they would be calling back in the next month or two to get our opt-in and opt-out. And I will, the reason that they need our information is because they will bundle together their contracts for that year, and they need to know what their purchasing power is. So when they go out and say, hey, we've got Eastern Ontario, they need to know how many trucks they need, and obviously, they'll get better prices. So my best information is in the next month or two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you can, so I think that's fair, and I understand where they come from. I know we're, we're almost two years ahead of where the time is. I was hoping that we could have delayed till six months out, and then we will be a lot smarter at that point because there'll be municipalities in that by that time. But if we have to have an answer in the next month, I'm going to go with the recommendation that we're out. And then I'm going to add a little something else. I'm going to leave it at that, but after we see where everybody stands on this, if there's still time before 6 o'clock, and we look at the title of this, I think there's more to discuss here than just that one question. And it is, I don't want to get off topic, but I think we do need to have a conversation about if we're going to start the conversation. We can't make decisions tonight, but if we start the conversation of whether we're going to supply collection to the people that are not going to be picked up.
That's a fair comment. If we can get a decision early, maybe there's some time to have at least a primer on that. I did see that CEO Mills wanted to.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to remind her to council that we had a presentation by, from county council by, or no, from Bendahon, at, from the counties about the regional waste. We've had a number of presentations about the regional waste management, and there should be some consultation through that committee and or talking to other councils. I'm not sure how that's going to look, but if this is a provincial approach, and now we're looking at something that might be to our advantage to go in regionally, we also have the City of Cornwall, Akwusasney, sending their waste to GFL. That's a lot of people in one area, and if we're the outlier, there could be, I don't know what the outlier, I don't know what I'm trying to say, but I don't know if we'd want to be an outlier to not do it when.
I think the point's well received. Whenever you're the only one doing something, it tends to cost a little bit more, but I did see Counsel McDonald, or did I, sorry, thank you. Counsel Jaworski, then Counsel McDonald.
Thank you, through you, Mayor McDonald. A couple, I mean, I understand this is the, what we're discussing this evening, but, I mean, in fairness, there's still a lot of question marks about exactly what we're opting in or opting out of. And I guess that's where I'm hoping to get a bit of clarity on, and maybe, maybe these answers aren't there, but like, in some of the discussions, while this was being hashed out, the Blue Box, there were comments made that, you know, with the targets that some of these producers have, basically, if they just do a good job in Toronto, they don't really need to do any recycling in rural Ontario, and we're going to be potentially stuck with a whole bunch of garbage that used to be recycling. And I guess that's where, one of the questions I have, is do we have some assurances that in the rural areas such as ours, that there's going to be good recycling targets and that there will be recourse for, if there isn't? Because, and that where, for me, where this links in is, if we have some hesitation on the level of service that they're going to give us, and the penalty all goes to us because if it's not done well, it all goes to our landfill, which ends up costing us more, do we want to completely lose capacity at being able to somehow cover this kind of, this service completely? Where, you know, if we wash our hands of it, we might find that the risk of that is quite high, or the impact of that. So if you could speak to that, about how do we think this is actually going to play out? Do we have any assurances of how it will play out in terms of diversion percentages for us? Please.
Excellent question, Counsel Jaworski, and through you, Mayor McDonald. Can I ask that I answer that particular question during the staff report to give me time to get an answer?
Sure. I'd much prefer a very confident answer than one that, so, and then, if I may, again, about to CAO Mills' comment about being, not being an outlier, you know, something that there's advantages of moving with the pack. Do we know what the rest are doing? Do we know what, and I'm, you know, specifically thinking about like North Glengarry with their facilities. You mentioned that Cornwall is likely out. I guess, again, that, I think, fits into this as well. I'm curious to where they're going. Thank you.
Another excellent question, and through you, Mayor McDonald. I have a sort of answer to that one. So I believe the City of Cornwall has opted out. I believe North Dundas had previously opted in, but may be reconsidering. So Stormont was still making a determination. I will note that through all these discussions, and again, this is just word on the street, that none of the local material recycling facilities have been approached. Let's say my information is a month old. So as of a month, a month ago, neither the rare plant nor the Cornwall plant had been approached to take on a contract with CMO. So I would say that if the rare plant was not approached, that they would, my gut says opt out, but it will largely depend, I think, North Glengarry, on whether rare gets picked up as something. And if anything, I suspect it would just be a transfer station. Like, I believe that here in SD&amp;G, any of the facilities would be a transfer station, and then they would bring it to somewhere larger like Ottawa for processing. I'm unsure of South Dundas, but I may look to the mayor, who might have insider information there.
When it comes to South Dundas, I don't recall that coming up on the staff report, but I'll look back, and I can report to council. If not, it's coming up in the future. Counsel McDonald?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I had similar reservations as Counsel Jaworski. I think when we look at the province as a whole, I think the bigger concern I have is regionally excelling and in other parts of the province not meeting probably expectations. My bigger concern as well is if we do opt out and not provide this service, how many people are we going to lose that we've had for years doing it? And what kind of, again, along the lines of Counsel Jaworski's question, the diversion loss going into the landfills and the cost that'll become inevitably associated with that? I guess, based just on how many tons we recycle, I don't know that there's many options if we don't provide it. So that's just a reservation I have that way. But again, as CEO Mills has pointed out, sometimes you don't want to be the one running alone as far as what the cost could inevitably give us. So I, it's almost a damned if you do, damned if you don't question at this point, especially with what little knowledge and expectations we have, or even things we have to consider looking at it. How, is it CMO? CMO is going to perform overall, especially regionally for ourselves, so. Most of my questions are kind of asked. And I, most of my questions are kind of asked at this point, so if somebody else says something, I'll leave it to them.
Okay. Yes, I see deputy mayor Lang. And just before going to you, deputy mayor Lang is the only one to approach the which date. So, do keep in mind, if you have a thought towards that, I'll go to you after this. So, deputy mayor Lang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm going to stay on the same, the recommendation, because listening to people around the table, I don't think we've got an answer yet. Although I've given you my answer, I say we opt-out. And I'm going to give a little more reason that I'm considering this. I don't think the service is going to be near as good as what we're doing. But what are we going to gain by staying in it, folks? We're going to have people mad at us. It's going to cost us a bunch more money. And it's not going to be our fault, because we're not going to have any control anymore. So, why get into a program where we have no control? We're only going to be able to gather or collect what they tell us we can collect. We're going to have to take it to where they tell us we have to take it. We might be able to continue the once-per-week. I suspect they likely won't, but we don't know that at this point. So, the only advantage maybe would be if we keep the once-a-week, but they may not take it at the other end, once a week, so we may have to store it and take it to them every two weeks. Like, I just see nothing but problems if we're not in charge and we try to do it. And we'd only do this for one year, and then we're out of the business no matter what, because we're not going to buy trucks, and we're not going to, there's no point in us hiring another company to do what they tell them to do. So, to me, I'd get out as soon as it's out of our control anymore. And that's my reasoning for wanting to get out of it. I suspect it's not going to go near as well as we like. And I don't think we have any control under that.
Great. Strong point. I'll move to Mr. Jane, and then I'll look to other councils if there's anybody who wants to speak kind of against that point, or opting out. And then perhaps if there's more in favor, then you can speak to that, too.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just one final parting comment for consideration here. The reason, so, as councillor Lang mentioned, we will have to opt-out as at January 1st, 2026. We don't have a choice in that matter. The reason we are choosing, or we are recommending that we opt-out Jan. 1st, 2025, is because it would give us another year of savings that we can then attribute to funding the landfill closure and post closure liability, which, as I mentioned, is going to be significant once that reassessment is done. So, that's really is the main impetus for the opt-out, is because it gives us another year of savings so that we can reduce the impact on the long-term debt and on taxation in future years. It gives us another year to be able to fund that landfill closure and post closure liability.
Thank you, Mr. Jane. Councillor Bougie?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I am leaning towards opting out for many reasons that were said around the table. I guess my major concern is there's not a lot of information, like CMO is going to run the program, but we don't know if they're going to have a facility in SD&amp;G, Eastern Ontario, they, and then Ms. McDonald didn't say they didn't approach RARE or Cornwall. I guess there's just a lot of unknowns. I guess, maybe we should be approaching them or asking them to see, to get a little more clarification. But with everything said, I am leaning towards opting out as well.
Okay. And it is a fair point, right? I think the hard thing here is kind of go back to that Serenity poem, like, you know, have the wisdom to know the difference. This is one of those things that we can control when we opt-out, but we cannot control what they do. We want to know what they'll do, and I think that will come to us with more tangible information. Right now, we don't have that. So, I can appreciate pretty much all of councils. It's hard to make a decision when the information's not there for us. So, the decision in front of us is that opt-out. And it seems that will carry. Is there any points strongly for or against at this point? Because I'd like to, and then maybe after this, we'll have 10 minutes just kind of discuss, if that's okay with you, Mrs. Clerk. Can we have a little bit discussion on what we'd like to see? Or is that outside of the purview of this meeting? Because it is, it's related to the blue box, but it's-
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're in a committee of the whole meeting this evening, so you do have a little flexibility. The purpose of the meeting is, of a committee of the whole, is so that you can discuss things a little less formally, so, yeah.
Excellent. So, councillor Jaworski?
I just have a question, but to the clerk, please. Like, again, like, we're not actually voting on this either in committee of the whole, correct? Like, it's not to the staff?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, they're, in committee of the whole, there's no vote. So, there is a staff report on the agenda later this evening in the regular meeting, which is where a vote would take place. So, in the committee of the whole, there are no decisions formally made through resolutions.
Okay. No, thank you. So, again, I mean, I, the question I asked earlier, I would really like to understand what that is, because, I mean, you know, maybe this is the question, but I feel like there are other options as well. I mean, potentially, they would be perhaps much too large to take at this point. But again, like, I think we need to try to have as much information as possible. So, I'm not really, I'm not going one way or the other at this point.
No, that's fair. And then councillor McDoel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to know the answer to your question as well. So, I guess when we do get that, at this point, I am leaning more towards the opt-out for the simple fact that, as councillor Lang highlighted, if it is, for example, bi-weekly recycling, the amount of pushback we're going to get on that alone would be significant, let alone the completely losing it. I mean, that's a, that's a one-month hard conversation, unless there's compelling evidence the other way, that it's actually going to save us money to put up with terrible service. But three members of this council have sat around going through terrible garbage collection. I really don't need to be running around picking up blue boxes as well. So, that's where my head is at this point.
No, that is, that is a good point. And I was administratively there, and it was probably the toughest two to five months, perhaps, that I think I've seen at municipality in the eight years I was there prior. So, we do want to avoid any of, any of those. They're all good points. All right. As we're not voting, but we do have a few extra minutes here. It looks, okay, yeah, we'll go to deputy mayor Lang. And I just want to mention that for service levels, if you have any thoughts on those, I guess we can have a brief, like, what you're thinking, but no discussion, of course. Go ahead, councillor Lang, or deputy mayor Lang, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Yes, and Mr. Jane's brought up the landfills and the closure costs. And I had a quick question on the slide you had. $2 million was the last estimated closure cost. Is that correct? Was that for one landfill or for both?
It was for both, but it was measured, from my understanding, over a decade ago.
Okay. Thank you. And I mean, obviously, it's likely going to, I'm just going to assume it's going to be double that. Like, it's, the way things have been going, and, but it, you know, we're still five to 10 years out on that. I'm going to throw something out there to people that I think we should discuss. It doesn't have, we don't need to decide it tonight, but as this, this blue box transition comes in, and we kind of figure out where we are with that, I'd like us to, and then Mr. Mills has said they're looking at regional waste, I'd like us to look at that in the next few years. I would hope that we could slow down the amount of garbage going to our, into our landfills, maybe slow it down to a trickle by using, like, maybe all residential garbage could be going through a regional thing to somewhere else. Slow it down, maybe the only garbage that goes to our landfill are the people that need to take things in, you know, in their pickup trucks, or maybe, you know, our dumpsters behind the arena, the road garage. And if we slow it down and buy ourselves another five or 10 years before that landfill needs to be closed, don't keep using it the speed we're using, and then all of a sudden, one day, it's gone. Let's, let's get the other stuff in place before it's full, so that we can maybe buy ourselves lots of time. I don't know if there's rules around that, that you have to have a certain amount going into it, or it closes automatically, but we need to look into those things. If there isn't, you know, we take it down so that there's, you know, 15 years left at the rate we're putting it in, and then, you know, we have time to make sure everything's in order before we get there. Just an idea.
If I may tag onto that, just before moving to councillor McDoel, you could even transition out of garbage, or where we put our garbage, in that, like, we could have our weekly recycle, or garbage go to, and that's what we're talking about now, is La Fleche, and then have our, it open on weekends, where, you know, pays you dump type of thing. So, like, there's options there, too, to try and extend that life. So, do be mindful of those. Councillor McDoel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess if we're talking service levels, our contractor for the garbage pickup is not going anywhere either, though we will still have HGC on that, assuming that the competitive process is following, they continue as our supplier or our contractor. Maybe it is the time, then, at this point, to open up the conversation to the potential of an organics program that would divert some kind of other, well, councillor Jaworski can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 50% of our garbage is food waste. So, if we're going to be, start seeing an influx of recyclable goods going into our garbage and into our landfills, maybe it's an opportunity to pull some of our organics out and utilize them in a different way. Given our contractor already has the trucks, I'm sure it'd be minimal capital cost for them, assuming the trucks are just as fine as, for that, as the other ones. But anyways, just a conversation that maybe be had, if we're going to be saving some on one. I know we'd like to put it all into garbage or into the future of the landfills, but this is another way of looking at it as well. Maybe it's a trial to see if it does divert much. So, comment for the group?
No, that's good, especially whenever it's a considerable amount of our waste. I'll go to Ms. McDonald for an answer, and then to councillor Jaworski, I believe, who had another comment.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor McDonald. This is a very preliminary, high-low, high-level response, but we would not, I would not suggest that the township trial organics. To do organics, we need to purchase bins, because no one's going to reach into a bin and pick out nasty organic stuff. Purchasing those bins for all residents would be likely upwards of $1 million of, like, a get-in cost. So, it's not something we particularly trial. You're either in or you're out. So, year one, we're probably looking at $2 million for organics. With collections, I would imagine, it would be that half million. We'd then need to pay someone to take it for us, plus we'd be buying everybody bins. So, that is just some numbers. Thank you.
Did you have a point to this, to that comment? If we'll go to councillor McDoel and back to-
Just, I guess, a point to that. I think there's a way of doing it as well. If you go down to the, the Quebec side does organic pickup as soon as the weather turns cold, bi-weekly, same with their garbage, bi-weekly. So, I'm not saying we go into a weekly pickup of it, maybe in the wintertime, in the winter months, or bi-weekly, in the summer months, when you get things growing in it, you pick it up weekly. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't even expect us to provide everybody a bin. If you want in, there's a select amount of people that are going to be interested in that. I don't believe there's too many farms or people on, you know, one-acre lots with a 200-acre field around them that's going to buy into it. They'll probably keep throwing it out off the back deck and into the field next to them. There's probably a select amount of people that would be interested, and I think you may get a buy-in at that point. If you want in, and you're going to do it, you go and get the bin. These are the qualifications for the bin. Canadian Tire's got them, and they're whatever, 40, 50 bucks. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go providing one to every household, though, at that point. Personally, I, it's an exploration idea. The 500,000 collection, I think you'd probably get that down, maybe higher because of the inflationary costs, and they have the trucks anyways. But I think you can cut out a good three, four months of the year to bi-weekly as opposed to weekly. And, like I say, it'd be interesting to see what those numbers would be in diversion in raw tonnage compared to what it would be. It's hard to tell. We don't know. But if there's an opportunity to save some in our landfill, it's better than sitting back doing nothing, because of the dollars will probably outweigh it the other way on the recycling loss.
Thank you. And councillor Jaworski?
Thanks. Just to piggyback on what councillor McDoel said just there, I mean, there's lots of things I think we need to look at when it comes to organics. Like, can we have a, a place at the landfill site that we can segregate, like leaf and yard waste? Like, that's one way to reduce the organics, like, what, you know, if it's already in a location together that doesn't involve, you know, brown paper bags or not buying everybody bins. I mean, there's still the food cycler program that I think is, would be, you know, I think it's a multi-pronged approach, I guess, is basically what I'm saying for organics, you know? Have a segregation area at the landfill, food cycler, maybe certain areas should have pickup, but I think we need to look at it, because you're correct, it's around 40% is organics waste in our, in our garbage. But sort of backing up a bit on the service level and what's included and what's not excluded, the issue around commercial farms that are listed that are excluded, and I don't know if there's any clarity on how are they treating residences on commercial farms? Like, are they going to be, they just weren't in the pretty, you know, like, one of these companies is, I'm assuming, is not rural-based, maybe doesn't have that rural lens, is not imagining the rural farmhouse. So, I'm wondering what, how they, they plan on approaching that.
Great question. And through you, Mayor McDonald. I don't know, but I will, we are actually having a regional meeting this Wednesday, and I'll see if anyone knows there. And if not, there is a provincial meeting at the end of the month, so I can pose that question.
All right. C.A.O. Mills?
Through, almost like Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. Through you, just a reminder to council that we're going to be at Roma this weekend, and with the whole province, and most municipalities will be there. It's a time to ask those questions and network. Also, there's going to be a session on, on this. And I know the last time, maybe there were not too many answers, but you'd think there'd be more answers this time. And, again, we're making the recommendations, and you're going to decide. Mr. Jane and Ms. McDonald have given some pretty good information to now, up till now, and the intent is to save, to fund the landfill closure and post closure liability. Just the other thing, we did talk a little bit about service levels, and, yes, we did go to weekly recycling. There are a number of times where the province has dictated where we're going to do, recently, the Strong Mayors Act with, with planning. This is something else, and we need to, we'll gather as much information as we can. We've got the Regional Waste Committee, Waste Management Committee meeting this week. I'm sure it'll be a topic of conversation. And the county C, the new county C.O. is coming to visit this week, so I'll float that out there, too. I guess the last thing I'd say, it's 6:00, but as someone once said when they were debating this, and one of the municipalities, if people stopped making the garbage as much, like, to deputy mayor Lang's point, then maybe wouldn't have as big of a problem. So, that's, it's really reducing the amount of garbage and how we can divert it away